Well, welcome. Good afternoon.
Recording in progress.
We're ready to start the August Budget and Audit Committee meeting. And it's now 4:02. Yeah, you know what? I don't have the agenda. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Can we do a visual roll call? Do we need to do a formal? Okay, visual. Councilmember Juan and I are both here. And first up on the agenda, item number two is a presentation from UBS on Advisory Investment Management. And Regina, do you want to kick us off before James Dill comes in?
Why don't you let me jump in here? Thank you, Vice Mayor Trupiano. We've asked our financial advisor, James Dill, who attended your last Budget and Audit Committee meeting, to give you kind of a report of the status of our city investments, to come back and present a proposal to provide advisory services for our investment portfolio. And so I know we have a bigger discussion coming up on the second item with the library refresh items. So just asking for the public's patience here because James is on the East Coast over in New Jersey. And I've asked him to keep his presentation very brief. We're just asking the council for some initial feedback. And if you have enough information to direct us to come back to council probably in early October with a more formal presentation to the full council. We just want to get some initial feedback from the Budget and Audit Committee and then get direction to come back to a future council meeting. With that, I'll introduce James Dill from UBS to run through his presentation.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Hi, everybody. How are you? I'll be brief. Like Adam said, I don't know if there's slides that we shared that could be pulled up.
Hold on, James. I don't know if we sent those to the city clerk. I don't believe we did. So let's work quick on our feet. Why don't you go ahead and start the introduction and we'll catch up with the slides.
Yeah, no worries. I mean, we don't need the slides necessarily. So based on our prior conversation, the proposal would be to set up the city's investment portfolio with what we would call an advisory solution, where the city would be hiring UBS as the professional investment manager for the city's investment portfolio. We would be working as a fiduciary for the investment portfolio. And we would work with the city finance director on framing an investment policy statement that would set the guidelines for how the city funds are to be invested. We're able to offer a wide range of fixed income investments from treasuries to agencies to corporate bonds to CDs as viable options for the city's investment portfolio of their excess funds. So UBS would be the advisor with discretion on the portfolio driven by the guidelines of the investment policy statement. This is a collaborative relationship where we're the portfolio manager, but the city really dictates the guidelines on the liquidity needs, on any risk parameters that we'd like to set. And then on an ongoing basis, we would provide the city with monthly reporting, monthly updates that we would have prepared. We would do a monthly call with the finance director and any one of the other city employees on the accounting side that would be helpful to join. We would probably do somewhat of like a semi-annual report with this group. And then we would do an annual report for the overall city on a regular basis. And then obviously, reporting or meetings would also be available as needed. So I can actually go to, I don't know if you can go to the next slide there. So this kind of talks about the professional investment management program that we have. It offers unbiased advice, institutional pricing. There's no commissions. Prices are done. Pricing is done at a fixed rate basis. Like I talked about, we have comprehensive portfolio reporting. We offer diversified options for investments for the liquidity needs. And it's a consultative approach. And the goal would ultimately be that we can do the investment management and the city has less time focusing on investments and more time focusing on the needs of the city. And then we could just go to the next slide. This kind of lays out what a fiduciary relationship is. UBS would be the investment advisor. There's a written agreement that describes all our different obligations. The definition of an investment advisor or fiduciary is set by the Investment Advisor Act of 1940. We carry, it carries fiduciary responsibilities that we would have in managing the investment portfolio, working in clients' best interest, no conflicts of interest, et cetera. And we can just quickly go to the next slide. This gets to the pricing of what the fee schedule would be. So right now, the city's investment portfolio is about $12 million. So that falls on an annual basis, pricing of about 20 basis points or 0.2% on an annual basis. And then we could just go to the next slide. So right now, we're obviously, the next step would be bringing it to the council. We would need to update the city's investment policy to fit the goals of managing this portfolio. We would set the portfolio allocation and the investment guidelines. And then obviously, we would monitor the progress on an ongoing basis. Like I talked about, it would include monthly reviews, semi-annual reviews with the budget committee, and then an annual review with the city council. But we're also available as needed. So the goal would be ultimately to provide the city with professional portfolio management on a fiduciary basis. And we would continue to kind of run that through based on the investment policy and the liquidity needs of the city. So I'll stop there. If there's anything else I should add, I certainly can.
Well, thank you, James. This is Kim Trupiano. And one question that I did have kind of based on our portfolio and now seeing the 20 percentage points, do you have any estimate for us what our annual costs would be? Is there any kind of guesstimate?
Well, so it's based on the overall size of the portfolio kind of on an annual basis. So if the portfolio was approximately $12 million at 20 basis points in dollars, that would come out to about $24,000. Ultimately, the portfolio pays interest as we're investing the funds. So that's not kind of a cost that you guys would have to accrue or, you know, write a check for the portfolio. If, for example, the portfolio returned 4%, the net return to the city would be 3.8%.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Is there, given what you've seen, is there, what type of upside potential do we have if we go to a service like this? We have a fairly conservative asset pool. So I'm just kind of curious what you see based on your experience so far? If there's any, you know, what type of potential we have there?
Well, in terms of potential for upside, part of it is that there's not going to be any built-in bid or ask or commissions that are built in to the cost of buying bonds. The other advantage is UBS is able to, in these advisory accounts, make purchases on kind of a bulk level. So when we're making a purchase, then we're able to purchase 25, 50, 100 million dollar lots and then obviously break those up between different client accounts for clients that are looking for specific investments. So they're certainly an advantage in economies of scale. They're certainly an advantage in paying no kind of underlying commission or markups or bid/ask. So in some ways, those are costs that, at this point, you don't really see. But when you do an advisory relationship, those costs are eliminated. So you're obviously be able to purchase investments at higher yields than you would if it was in the commission relationship.
Thank you. I think if, one of the things that staff was looking for is direction from us as a committee and then what we would come back with to the full council. So I think one thing that I would like to see is kind of a report out probably with like a one to two-year look back of the fees slash commissions slash markup that we have paid in our current arrangement, just so that we could contextualize what that would be if we are avoiding a similar run rate on a go-forward basis. I think you could probably pull that up in your records and then that could be part of the presentation when we come back to council.
Yep.
I think that's excellent. And did staff have anything else to add? Any other recommendations or?
Vice Mayor Trupiano, it's not uncommon for agencies to have an investment banker like this. Many of our local partners here in the area do. And so would be staff's recommendation to move forward with this. Correct.
Thank you, Regina.
I'm good. Thank you. That was, that was great, James.
Thank you, James.
Okay, have a great meeting.
Oh, and we do have a public comment on this agenda item. And we do have one speaker. James, hang on.
I'm here.
Councilmember Juan, Vice Mayor Trupiano, Frank Gavidia. I'm on the Finance Committee. I happen to be in this industry. Quick note, Councilmember Juan, what you're asking for him to do to try and compare and contrast the last two years, when you're buying new product, which is what's pretty much been done, there is no markup. The commission is paid directly by the issuer, and he was buying a lot of CDs. I think that what James didn't say, again, I work exclusively in this capacity at my firm, which is 100% independent, is the obligation of an investment advisor to do what is in the best interest of its client. As opposed to the brokerage relationship, suitability is the only thing that matters. So February of this year, there were two trades that were done. And I looked at those trades. They were two-year treasuries that were bought in the secondary, meaning they weren't new issue. I'm pretty sure the markups there, given the yield to maturity of those, were pretty substantial. It was suitable for the city, but it was not in its best interest. That's not a knock on James. That's just what was done. Whereas if it's in your best interest to buy off of the treasury auction, that's what UBS or any other investment advisor has an obligation to do. You're not going to get a good apples-to-apples comparison. The bottom line is, if you wanted to hire somebody to do this for you at the city level, you're going to have to pay that guy $150,000, $200,000 or more. I don't come cheap. So this arrangement, and now that I've seen the pricing, I think I've spoken to you, Vice Mayor Trupiano, at 20 basis points, that's where I would price it at my firm, if not somewhere slightly less. That's a good, that's good pricing. I mean, if you go to any of the other firms out there for this, it's going to run 50, 60, maybe 100 basis points. This is probably in the best interests of the city. We don't have anyone on staff that can do this for us. You don't want to have to call them. You have a very simple investment objective, which is do what's in our best interest, the highest safety and the highest yield. That's what they will have to do. So that's all I have. I'm glad that the city's looking at this. Thank you, Regina. Thank you very much. Thank you, Adam, for bringing us Regina. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Is there any other public comment on this? In the audience, anyone on Zoom?
There are no members of the public joining us via Zoom.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we are going to close this item and move on to what?
Thank you, Mr. Dill.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dill.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, thanks.
And we're going to move on to item number three, which is the library refresh proposal. And I believe our city manager is going to take that. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Trupiano. So the library refresh project has started a while back before I joined the city. And so during that time of transition, I've asked our city clerk and our city engineer to work with the library and move forward this discussion. Our two members of staff have met with the library folks and had the initial discussion and preview of the design and a discussion about the preliminary budget. And so we've asked the library folks to come today and provide this information to the two members of our Budget and Audit Committee so that we can forward this item to council for a larger discussion and then obviously go back to our budget, assuming that the council continues to want to support this project, which I believe the city does want to support this project moving forward, and come up with a game plan on how to actually move the discussion forward. I've asked our city engineer to kick off the presentation by just kind of framing it and then turning it over to the library for them to lead us through the presentation, a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, committee members. We met with the library, county librarian, the branch manager about a month ago. And what's attached to the staff report is a kind of a full encompassing list of potential improvements within the library that was prepared at that time. The library funded the preliminary design work and cost estimating that were included in the staff report. And the library understands that that's an all-inclusive number. So in the last month, we've been, we asked them to prioritize that. So there's a supplemental handout that you should have received today, which the librarian will go over on sort of the phasing of the priorities. And it looks like when we had the discussion, we were focused on like three funding sources, really grants through the county, fundraising through the foundation, Library Foundation, and any city contribution. They're all obviously could be varying amounts. So I think today is really to let the library inform the city, discuss sort of the priorities, get feedback, not only from the committee but from the general public, and then discuss, you know, potentially what the next steps are. So I'm going to turn it over to Allison McKee, who's the county librarian, to go through her presentation.
Thank you, Larry. Hi, Allison.
Good afternoon. Nice to see you. Thank you for inviting us to your meeting to talk about this. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. So probably a year or so ago, we were informed by the city manager at the time that they were considering a refresh of the library and primarily focusing on replacing the carpet and doing some painting. And we let them know that generally, if a city is in the position to replace carpet, that's a great opportunity for us to look at any revisions of layouts since you got to take everything out anyway. And the layout of the Clayton Library is basically the original layout. And things have changed quite a bit in terms of how we deliver library services, but also how the community receives library services. And also, the community of Clayton has changed quite a bit. So city manager at the time gave us the nod and said it would be great if you want to engage an architect to kind of do some conceptual exercises on what might be possible. So we have done that. And of course, we told them, look, let's just, let's just imagine money is no object. And that way, we have a great, you know, sort of menu of options. I also wanted to just clarify something that was in the staff report, which is that the livable trust monies that were identified there were actually gifted, granted to the Clayton Library Foundation from a former supervisor, Karen Mitchoff. And they're not, they're not Measure X funds at all. Okay? And I know you have an amazing library foundation who's very invested in the library. And we have not had a chance to meet with them yet. We wanted to, since we leased the facility from you, we wanted to really engage the city first. In the contract that we have with the architects that we engaged, so the contract is for $120,000. And what's included in that contract, if the city would like, is a community engagement session about the refresh. So I just wanted to put that out there in case the city does want to take advantage of that. We are positioned to do that. Let's see.
And Allison, may I just ask you, that $120,000, you said that's in a contract, is that between the city and the county?
No, that's between the county and the architects.
And the architect.
Yeah, so that's 100% funded by the library, the county library.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I think maybe I will share my screen and share the spreadsheet. And just as I was preparing for this meeting, I sort of rearranged some tick marks because this spreadsheet was, we met with the architects last week and said, please, you know, let's talk about what would make sense to include in Phase One if the carpet's getting torn out and certain things are getting removed. What does it make sense to include in Phase One? What then would it make sense to include in Phase Two? And then Phase Three is sort of like the really nice-to-haves. And I moved some things over to the nice-to-haves. So I might, and all of these are movable depending on the conversations that we have with city staff and based on input that they receive from you. Okay, let me see if I can multitask here. Okay. So as a courtesy, the architects said, well, why don't we just give you some estimates for the carpet? We understand that they might be going out to bid themselves on this. And so the carpet is this line six here or item number one, two, and three. And they even included the carpet in this room. If that's something that is being considered, we thought that it was. The first phase.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Absolutely.
You had mentioned that you made some changes. Is the printout that we have the same as the one being displayed? Or are they slated?
Oh, I can, the only.
It's okay. I'm just curious because I need to like use my device to magnify it for myself.
Yeah, I do understand that. Everything is the same, except I moved over into Phase Three. And this was just sort of my opinion in the last 30 minutes, that the study pods could go over in Phase Three and the discovery zone could go into Phase Three and the exterior furniture, so basically 14, 15, and 16. I moved over to Phase Three.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And I do have drawings of the existing layout and drawings of what, and you have those same in your packet?
Yes.
Of what Phase One would look like. But I could show those on the screen if you prefer at any point. So other than the carpet and paint, what's included in Phase One are the window seats in the children's area because those apparently are broken and a bit of a safety hazard. The book drop is problematic in that when folks return books, they just kind of pile up on the floor. And it's not ergonomically ideal for staff to have to kind of bend over and pull things up. So that is something we would love to resolve. And then the restroom door in the staff area is a sliding pocket door, so there's no privacy. That would be great to resolve as well. In addition, there's a little bit of interior furniture that we're suggesting would be ideal for Phase One. And maybe now is a good time to switch over to looking at the plans. So, okay, but it didn't change on my screen. Do this again. So here is the library layout as it is now. And over here on the right-hand side where my cursor is, is all that there is for the teen area right now. It's just a nice little tiny sliver. And ideally, we would do a little flip-flop. And this area on the left-hand side, we would suggest and would like to turn into a nice, robust teen area. I'm sure you're aware, this is the main place for teens after school here in Clayton. And we get a nice crowd. And Geneva and her staff do an excellent job providing activities for them. And we'd like to just give them a little bit more dedicated space that they can enjoy and that's outfitted for them. And so what that means is we're suggesting that, again, it didn't, that we would need to change some furniture there. Let's see, does that flip? Yeah. So this $73,000 represents some teen furniture. The other thing that is currently in the library is this reference desk, which about 15 years ago, we changed our model of providing service. So our libraries no longer have a reference desk and a checkout desk. We have a single service desk. And so what is this reference desk, again, Geneva and her staff have been incredibly creative. And they've turned that into sort of like a children's fort. So as Phase One, this reference desk would be removed. And there would be some children's furniture that would be added there. And then the other thing that that $73,000 represents in Phase One is some furniture here where the teen area is now, a quiet reading zone for adults. So other than that, that is all we are recommending for Phase One. And I can show you if Phase One were actualized, this is what it would look like. Oh, I forgot to mention that these shelves here are currently mostly empty. They're the reference materials, which we have very few reference materials anymore. Most of our reference materials are circulating, so they're interfiled. So these shelves would get removed. And again, some more seating would be put there for adults. And I guess I'll pause now and just see if you have any questions or comments. And I should mention that I have with me, in addition to Geneva Moss, who I know you know, the community library manager here at Clayton, her supervisor, Giia Palini, who's a library services manager as well. And so between the three of us, one of us hopefully will have an answer to any questions you have.
Well, I think I'm going to let you go on with your presentation unless you've got something specific, Councilmember Juan, because I have a number of questions, but they're not Phase One. Councilmember One, because I have a number of questions, but they're not Phase One questions. Do you have anything you want to?
Sure, just to, just briefly, because I also want to hear the rest. In terms of timing and sequencing of Phase One and the future phases, are there dependencies that, like, how disconnected are the different phases? Like, can you just do Phase One? Can you just do Phase One in parts of Phase Three? Or, or is it meant to be sequential?
Not necessarily. In terms of dependencies, contingencies, no. They can be standalone, and that was the direction we gave the architects, was we really want this to be, you know, Phase One, really, really pretty basic, fundamental needs. Phase Two and Three can happen whenever and however, and they can be mixed and matched.
Okay. And then maybe at the, at the end, we'll talk more about funding and how we, you know, how we can make that work. When we had initially approached this, I think, I don't remember the timing. It was a little while ago. And there was kind of like some rough idea of, you know, the city's contribution versus other contributions. I think Larry mentioned other sources of funds. Are we prepared to talk about that today? Or is that something that we'd talk about at a later time?
That is not a question I can answer.
Later, okay, got it. All right, please, please continue. That, that was all I had, just.
Because I, I think funding is important to talk about a little bit today. I think that's kind of why we're here in front of the budget, not a committee, right? To talk about funding and are we going to make a recommendation back to the rest of the council about moving forward with even Phase One? So I think we should talk about that. But I would like you to keep going with your presentation if you could.
Sure.
And then we'll ask all those questions and allow for public comment.
Sure, great. Now for Phase Two and Three, I was not, the architects were not able to get those prepared for today's meeting. So we'll have to use our imaginations. So Phase Two, the recommendation is that it's all of the interior furniture, other, you know, other than that limited adult lounge, the children's tables, and the teen area. And so that furniture is really a combination of additional teen room furniture, additional furniture for the children's area. And maybe Geneva or Gen, Gia will remember other furniture that we were talking about other than the- Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, so that would probably not. We do have some children's, a few children's tables in storage that we were planning that we could just use for Phase One instead of purchasing them. But they've been in storage for a while, so I haven't gone and, and looked at the sizes and so forth.
And just when you were talking on that, just to kind of elaborate, that teen area right now, all of that furniture will be-
Can she come up to the microphone? Geneva, can you come up to the microphone? Yeah, it's hard to hear you.
Just to kind of elaborate on the question that Alison just posed, Gia and I, all of the furniture that's showing on that right hand in the current teen area lends itself to use when it gets flipped for the quiet reading area. So that's why in Phase One, we don't necessarily have to purchase new furniture for the quiet reading area. That's something that we already have present. So it's something else that is kind of built in, which makes it nice to keep those costs down.
And I think-
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so the additional furniture, the interior furniture excluding Phase One, so number 12, a lot of that is the adult furniture. If, you know, again, this was sort of, you know, if we could have whatever we wanted, much of that adult furniture would be replaced and modernized. Not that it has to be, but it could be. Let's see, oh. Then under shelving and displays, number 17, this was adding end panels at the existing stacks. And that would be all of these, and correct me if I'm wrong, Geneva. Oh, it's the children's area?
It also includes, if it's not primarily, because they're 30 years old and they're starting to get laminate pull off and such.
Okay, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Geneva, what did you say on the shelving and?
So the end caps on both our adult stacks and our children's stacks, not only are they dated, but being 30 years old, laminate's starting to pull off and such. So this is, that's part, that's another part of the reason. You know, it's kind of a maintenance and update, not just an update.
Okay, thank you.
And just to make sure we're not speaking too much in library code, the end panels are sort of the flat side, you know, and you can put displays and-
We have like what books are in that row. So it's kind of the pathfinder for that row as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then we're also recommending four, four high mobile units. So those are shelving units that are mobile. And I believe those would go in the children's area. Nope, getting it all wrong. Oh, that was for the teen area.
Well, in the marketplace. Because we have to move all the new items out and create a marketplace.
So that would be new mobile shelving in this area here.
A couple of them might be in the kids' area to reduce. We have some site issues with our current shelving for biographies in the kids' area.
And what is a marketplace? Can you, yeah.
Yeah, so we, again, that's library speak. Marketplace is sort of an area generally when you first enter a library that are the bestsellers, the new releases, the most popular items.
Okay, thank you.
Mobile display units. I'm just going to let Geneva tell you where that's going to go, because I'm getting it all wrong.
Well, and actually, I may have reversed those too, so.
Okay.
And mobile display, there are some, some of those four high, I will just say, the four high and the mobile display units are addressing our issues in our marketplace and a few places in our children's area. So it may be, like Alison said, the four high go in children's and the mobile display go in marketplace. But it's also that we can have easily accessible collections for the people who are using them.
The other-
And sightlines, safety sightlines.
Yeah, good point. The other advantage to having mobile shelving units is when needs and trends change, we'll be able to more easily adjust the layout. Let's see. A brochure and community display area is also in Phase Two. Phase Three, let me see, yeah, I think we took care of all of the construction. Phase Three, we've got what we had recommended and what the architects said they had used before with great success is, and, and relatively low cost, are creating glass walls. So a glass walled-in area for the teen area as well as a silent reading area over here on the right-hand side. And so the way that we are moving with our layouts is that instead of putting the teens, kind of locking the teens away and trying to create a space where their activities will not disturb anybody else, we assume that during the after-school hours, the teens are really going to take over the library for a few hours. And so instead, we're moving towards a model where we provide a silent area for any adults who want that during those very active after-school hours. So that's what we would love to see happen in this sort of triangle area there. And according to the architects, there's already sort of a pretty good infrastructure that it wouldn't be very cost, very costly to add that wall. And then we would suggest a little bit of a barrier in the teen area just so they feel a little bit more like they have their own space. Let's see, where did I leave off? Okay, so that's number seven and eight. In Phase Three of furniture.
Can I, can I ask you about that a little bit? Is that okay?
Of which part, yeah?
About seven and eight?
Yes.
So seven and eight's in Phase Three, but we're also, but in Phase One, it seems like some of the stuff is like rearranging the furniture that would affect that same area. Does it, does that, just that component of Phase Three, seven, eight, does that go, does that kind of go with some of the Phase One activity of re, of moving the teen area?
Yeah.
To the front? Because then necessarily, it won't be there anymore. So if you don't have it there, wouldn't, would you want to do that at the same time?
You know, sure, ideally. However, a lot of our teen spaces aren't segregated by any walls at all. Again, there's the assumption, okay, 2:30 to five, or six, or whatever, they're going to have the run of the place. We really want to provide a silent, more silent place. So I would say, and maybe, maybe I didn't understand your question. Ideally, it would be fantastic if in addition to a flip-flopping, the adult and the teens, to put the wall-
The wall for the adults. Because that, that's what this is, right? That's what seven and eight is.
Yes. Number seven is, is walling off the adult air, that adult-
Okay.
Quiet area over here on the right.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so-
I saw to understand the, the relationship.
Yeah, so in our opinion, that's more important. But, you know, we certainly have plenty of libraries where that is not the case. And adults just leave, unfortunately, they just leave during those hours. Now, I think the after-school crowd here at Clayton is one of our least rowdy crowds. But, you know, when they make noise and when they socialize, that is developmentally appropriate for them. So it's not some, we do not expect them to come in and be silent.
And we do have a large, if you've been here on a Wednesday afternoon, we have, in addition to the teens who might be coming in, especially once we have a space for them, every Wednesday afternoon is early release for all the public schools. We have a program for the elementary kids. They do our treasure hunt. They're here from 1:30 to 3:30. An hour of that is usually in this room or 45 minutes. But that's when the adults will appreciate the quiet reading area as well. So.
Let's see, so that was seven and eight. And then in terms of furniture, so looking at number 14, there's an opportunity to put some nice furniture in the exterior courtyard. And I happen to know there's very strong Wi-Fi out there. So that's another, you know, potential improvement. Number 15, study pods. So we've been doing some work, surveying the community and investigating solutions, furniture solutions, because we know that there's a pretty sizable demographic of our community who are using our libraries for, when they're remote working. And what we've learned is that what they would really love is a place to be able to take their Zoom meetings without disturbing other folks. So we looked at, I think this estimate is for three study pods? Does that sound right?
I think it's too small in the big.
Yeah, so two single and-
Two doubles.
Yeah. Oh, two doubles and a, and a four. Yeah, so there's, there's lots of different flavors of these study pods. But a sort of placeholder estimate at this point is about $93,000. And that can move up and down depending on how many, what size they accommodate, and so on and so forth.
And right now, for that demographic, we have one study room for anywhere from one to four people that's booked for two hours at a time. And it's first come, first served. You can book up to a week, but, you know, it's often, you know, we'll have somebody who has an interview at the same time, somebody else has a Zoom meeting. So down the road, being able to add this would be a huge boon for the community. We also have lots of people studying for their bar exam, for their CPA exams, all sorts of stuff that like to use those rooms. And the acoustics and such are much better in these study pods. We can hear a lot down the hall from that study room that when we were testing out the study pods, you couldn't hear as much from those. So it gives people more privacy as well when they're trying to run their business, or, you know, run their meetings and get their interviews done.
They're not 100% soundproof, but they're probably 95% soundproof.
They're better than the room we have.
Now, depending who you talk to, the Discovery Zone Early Literacy Hub, I, this is one of the ones that I just moved over to the Phase Three. It could be Phase Two, it could even be Phase One. So that would be this area here. And there are a number of really wonderful things that could be added there in terms of shelving, furniture, what we call manipulative, so early literacy learning furniture even. And maybe Geneva can describe that now. And I think you have some of it in there already, sort of like very small-scale versions of it.
Yeah, we do have the small scale. One of the vendors that we use in some other places called Virgin. But to describe it to you so that you might recognize it, there are those wooden pieces that have like maps on them that they can play with, or have different puzzles, or have magnet pieces. And they have pieces that can be switched out to keep the learning fresh. And so it's something that the kids of all ages can interact with to support the literacy at their developmental stage that they're at.
And let's see, oh, okay. And then the last thing under here, under casework, we put into Phase Three, you know, the circ deck, the circ desk or the service desk could use some upgrades. The sorting area, which is the area right behind, right? We're not talking about the staff area, right behind, could also be improved so that it supports their workflow better. And then where the self-checks are, I think we talked about moving them to an entirely different location. And if that's the case, did we talk about moving them over here?
So, no.
No, okay, take it away.
So what we talked about is the circ desk could get a little shorter. Right now, we have the self-checks on the end. So if you have your circ desk and it can be a little shorter, and our sorting casework can maybe have like one column taken out to leave more room for holds, because as you know, that, if you come into the library, that service is booming. And then we looked at putting four? I think we landed at four self-checks kind of in, we, I think that's what that is right there.
These, these blue ones?
Yeah. Yeah, so in that area with self-return bins to take some of that off of the staff, it gives privacy to the people at the desk. It gives more independence to the people. And in Clayton, I think we have over an 80% usage of our self-checks. This community really likes to come in, take care of their business, ask us if they need help. But a lot of the times, they just want to come in and to get their stuff. And the kids love doing it. And it fosters such independence and engagement with the library that we want to keep those self-checks, but let them be in a better space.
And that is the same thing with our print station. The way it is now, I, I think we're reusing some old furniture that was not meant to be used as a print station. So we would just replace that and put it in a place that is better for the flow of how people are using the library and interacting with staff.
Especially because we also have a scanner. So the idea was if we can get the scanner and the printer close together, have a business center kind of set up.
So as you can see, or probably intuit, this is all in the very conceptual stage. We are not married to anything. We do think that this library would be even better than it is if it had a refresh. The architects were very impressed. The library has great bones, it's beautiful. And a little bit of moving things around, updating the furniture could really kind of bring it to the next level. And so, you know, we're really looking forward to receiving direction from the city and hopefully engaging with the foundation as well.
Well, thank you, Alison and Geneva, go ahead.
Just one question. At the upper section, when it, underneath the subtotal above the blue line, when it talks about construction costs, it lists most of the construction costs in Phase One. it lists most of the construction costs in Phase One and some in Phase Three. Is that because the Phase Two work doesn't, just doesn't have much construction going on? It's mostly furniture?
Exactly. Yes, yes.
That's it?
Do you have any other questions, or?
Okay.
So, um, and thank you for clarifying about, uh, the Measure X, because that was one of the things on my, um, list today. Um, so the other thing I just wanted to, um, do a little bit of, I guess distinguishing is the best way for me to say it. And maybe some of this is from the staff, uh, report as well. Um, so the, the living trust, again, we know is not Measure X, but, um, the foundation has their own funds. And then the living trust is a se, is a separate fund, right? These are, they almost sounded like they were kind of one in the same in this, um, description. So I just wanted to distinguish that. The foundation has funds, and then it has living trust funds. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I can maybe clarify a little bit more that the, um, uh, former supervisor Karen Mitchoff gave the funds, granted the funds to the Library Foundation. And the Library Foundation has an MOU with the agency that is distributing those funds, the county agency that's distributing those funds. And, uh, that MOU, I believe, says that the funds need to be spent in-
Five years.
Five years. Yeah, and I think we're in year-
Five tranches, fifty thousand a year for, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes. Five years, so fifty thousand a year over five-
Or in two years.
Years. There's five tranches of fifty thousand each.
Two fifty?
Two fifty.
Two fifty total?
Two fifty total.
Right.
And one of the other clarifying things I wanted, and I do have, um, the scope of the work here, is that living trust is very limited.
Wait, so the two fifty is outside the living trust?
No, is the living trust.
Is, oh, got it.
The two fifty is the living trust. But what it can be used for is very limited. Um, in fact, I think, and the foundationals probably speak to this, that carpeting, it cannot be used for carpeting, correct?
Furniture, I believe, is, is an allowable.
Yes.
What is allowed?
Furniture is allowable.
Yes, furniture is allowed. Mm-hmm. Um, and I guess the other disparity, and maybe you've explained this today, is that I know when we started this discussion a year ago, uh, we were looking at maybe a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project. And I guess I was just curious how we got to almost one point four million. And is this just, are these phases, is that a, is that a wish list? Is that how we're describing it? Like, if we could, this is what we would do?
Yes, that's, that's right. So, uh, Phase One, I would say, is a need. Phase Two, I would say, is, um, you know, I don't know. What's between a need and a want? A need plus?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'd say Phase Three is more nice to have, although that's debatable with the early literacy, um, learning, um, what do they call it here? Uh, the Discovery Zone. I don't know if you would say that's nice to have. I mean, it, it really, uh, makes a big difference in, um, the children's area. Um, but, you know, um, the li, even if no improvements were made to the library, you're still, um, providing an amazing service to our community. And I will brag on my staff, they're still amazing. Um, so, you know, um, I think the question is, is if all the carpet's going to be taken out, and that's our opportunity to do upgrades, um, where, what should we focus on first? And, um, how can it be built upon?
Right.
How can we position it so that it can be gradually added to?
Okay. And then, um, one of my other, um, questions, thank you for that, Allison, is if we're just looking at Phase One, did we have a timeline on how long that? No, we don't. Okay.
Yeah, not from our end. You know, really, the, the trigger is the, the, you know, the beginning of all of this was the city's wish to replace the carpet. And so I would say whenever, or if the city decides to move forward with that, that is really, you know, when the time starts.
And I'm not, you know, maybe I'm, uh, remembering it differently, I'm not sure. And maybe the foundation can speak to it. I couldn't remember, did the city initiate a change of carpet? Or I think maybe we talked about it in a foundation meeting, that it's been almost thirty years, right, next year? And that the carpeting has not been changed. So I'm not really sure that the city initiated that.
Ah.
Um, and then one of the other questions I had too was, um, Nolan in Ten, do they have any visual renderings besides kind of the schematic? Is there anything visual that they've prepared?
Not, not yet.
Okay, not yet.
I don't, that wasn't in the scope of the contract, um, at, at this point.
Right.
But for sure, if, um, the city desires to do a community engagement session, there would absolutely be visuals.
Okay.
And of course, at some point, you know, along the line, there will be visuals.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And then, um, Larry Thies, I just want to go back to one other thing you said about, uh, paying for this with city money, grant money, and, uh, foundation money. So when you were thinking grants, are there any grants outside of the living trust that might be a possibility here for the city to apply for?
I would defer to the county librarian. I believe that what we are aware of is the grants that are through the former supervisor Mitchoff's office. Um, we have not, um, researched or procured any other grant opportunities related to this work. So it was looking at that particular, um, sort of pot of money as a potential. So I don't know if you wanted to stand on that.
I don't know if other cities have applied for other grants outside of, you know, maybe they don't have a living trust. So how have other cities paid for, uh, their refresh projects?
Um, I think their refresh funding is usually, um, a combination of capital improvement project funding. Um, many of them do receive support from their friends or foundations as well. Sometimes there are local organizations that grant funds. Um, but, uh, just to, to clarify, for, um, uh, county staff would not apply for, for grants for this type of project because, um, as was, uh, outlined in the staff report, the, um, uh, responsibilities, um, that the county has is for operations and collections and staffing. And the city's responsibilities, and this isn't just the city of Clayton, this is all of the cities that we work with, um, their responsibility is the facility and furnishing. Um, that said, if we hear about grant opportunities, that might be appropriate. We would certainly pass it along.
Okay.
Um, uh, you know, state funding has dried up quite a bit. I'm sure you're not surprised to hear that.
Right.
Um, but yeah.
Okay. And then my very last question was, um, and maybe this is a discussion we can have, is about fundraising. Um, I don't even know what that would look like. Is that the onus of the city to do a fundraising campaign, or the foundation? Um, or normally, like, the friends of the library foundations, the ones who lead this kind of fundraising as a 501(c)(3)? Is that how?
Yes, that's typically what I've seen, is that the friends or local foundations, uh, lead a fundraising effort.
Okay. That's it for me right now. Councilmember One, anything else?
No, I, I'm, I'm good. I, I think I can follow what's going on, so, uh, I think it's really clearly, really clearly laid out. So I appreciate that. Um, and yeah. Is, I mean, I think in terms of funding, I, I just had a set of questions, but I mean, like, what's our prognosis for additional funds beyond city funds? I think that's the key. And I'm not sure who could best address that among staff and Larry and the foundation and the library representatives. Is, is, uh, since you're at the center, I will ask you first.
Okay.
Uh, is, is the county prepared to, uh, contribute as well to the overall effort? Like, as a, kind of like a collaborative joint effort?
Um, we are prepared and have contributed, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the architectural services.
Yeah, for the design part.
Yeah, in terms of furniture, no, because, um, then I'd have seventeen other cities wanting me to find money for their furniture upgrades.
Okay. Is there any other component here that the count, that the county is prepared to contribute outside of the furniture? I, I get the furniture and probably the-
No, I have the design and architecture.
Yeah, is it, are we limited to just the design from the county contribution?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So then, um, you know, then it turns to both the city, the foundation, and any other fundraising? I think that's what we're looking at? Okay.
Um, Councilmember One and Vice Mayor Trupiano, if I can just chime in here a little bit. I think the, um, I think the financial contribution is pretty clear. But I think the collaboration and the partnership, it's important that all parties continue to work together because this is their workspace. They know the participation level of the adults, the kids, seniors, and everyone in between, right? And so that collaboration, working from the design, it kind of helps move, move, moves us forward. The efforts, you know, so working with the county library in, in San Mateo County, when I was in Belmont, when the city redid its building, again, that relationship with the county library staff was really important. And again, with the foundation and the community. So I think it really is a partnership. The city, you know, I think what, what the previous city manager shared with me before I started and shared with, with Vice Mayor Trupiano is the city, you know, was roughly budgeting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for carpet and paint. Um, again, no estimates, just, you know, just, that was kind of a, a ballpark number. And there, and, and he was aware that there was also some additional grant funds available to help, you know, support that effort. So now that we have a design and, and a, and a vision, or at least, uh, the beginnings of a design and a vision of what the library can be, then it really is a community effort. You know, this is the community's library, and the community, as, as the county has experienced in other cities, um, will embrace certain areas. There'll be someone that really is excited about, um, the discovery zone, the discovery area. And although it's Phase Three, it could move up to Phase One based on someone getting excited and writing a check for that. So I think with the foundation's leadership working alongside the city and the library, you know, we kind of create a campaign, look at the areas where the city thinks it can fund. Some of these things that are in Phase Three, and I think Larry will join me on this, and Regina now is our new Assistant City Manager Administrative Services Director, who's been on just for a few months. And as everyone should know, I leave next week. Um, so my, which is why I wanted Larry and Stephanie working with the library and driving this project. You know, I have a hundred percent confidence in the two of them. But our challenge as a city is deferred maintenance across the board. And so as the city has a responsibility to maintain the library, we also have to have a plan, right? And we have to have a schedule. And just like replacing vehicles, replacing software, whatever, there's got to be a plan. And I think that's what the Budget and Audit Committee will be doing. We have a nice, long on-ramp between now and July one to kind of get this all in place. We know that there is a contribution the city needs to make, and, and I think the city will be prepared to do that. But I think what Councilmember One and Vice Mayor Trupiano asking is, let's kind of talk about the timeline so we can plan accordingly with, with all the other needs, including the needs in this room that are not just limited to the carpet, you know, or the paint. Um, you know, so I think that, that, that relationship with the community, this was a good start to that conversation. And as Larry and Stephanie work with the library folks and work with the, uh, foundation, now we can kind of open up the circle now and, and be more inclusive in the discussion. And then kind of start prioritizing the needs and the offer to have the architect, um, kind of help us with some community engagement to kind of go through some of the proposed ideas, because they're all, libraries today are incredible. I, I was working with the same design firm in East Palo Alto, as, as they were coming on to East Palo Alto. Um, and, you know, so it's very, it's very exciting, right? And the community get very excited about it. Um, so how you move forward from here is going to be important. Engaging the community, coming up with a, a funding plan, learning from the other cities that the county has worked with, the things that worked well, the things that may not have worked as well, and, and learn from that to bring it here to Clayton. So I think we're off to a really good start. And I think this was super helpful because what Larry and Stephanie came back with, I just saw the bottom-line numbers, like, holy smokes. We're, we're, we have some, we have some real challenges. So I appreciated your responses back to me. And, and, and then obviously today's discussion on how, how we're framing this and prioritizing it. Because Phase One is reachable. It's still a ton of money, especially for Clayton. It's a ton of money. But it's, it's reachable, it's attainable. And so now it's got to have a, a plan on how to, in fact, you know, do that. And that's future conversations at Budget and Audit, working with Regina, Larry, and Stephanie, and inviting the foundation and, and the library folks to join us. The challenge with cities, county has the same challenge, um, when it's not just staff. When you involve elected officials, we have to be very transparent, and we have to be open. And so rather than us have, continuing to have staff meetings, I just thought it was important, let's bring everyone up to speed really quickly, have this meeting, get this all out. We're going to have public comment here in a second to let the foundation and others comment. But this is really an opportunity, you know, to now move forward together. We have an initial scope, we have an initial design, now we can flush that out.
Well, thank you, Adam. Jeff, another? Oh, okay. Uh, thank you, Allison and Geneva. And now we will open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to, uh, come up to the podium and comment. Mr. Gavidia.
I wasn't going to comment on this, but, one, you need to clone this guy and find a way to keep him. And I hope whoever you hired is half as good as he is. This is a good idea, the whole staff working together on an idea. This is something I haven't seen here. I've been, well, you know, Councilmember One, I've been showing up to these things since 2018, and I see things getting done. About the only other thing, and it's kind of a off-topic for the foundation, I, when I was a member of a nonprofit that you were a member of, I brought up the idea of, you know, why are you not taking in appreciated stock? Or finding a way to take in or advertise that people can do what's called qualified charitable distributions out of their retirement accounts? Just, we don't do enough to fundraise, you know, in the more sophisticated ways. Clayton is not a poor town. I believe the average, what is it, the median income here is one fifty? There are people with retirement accounts. I know all of my clients with retirement accounts call me up every year when I tell them, you've got to take your minimum, and they yell at me because they have to pay taxes on it. Well, donate it. But you need a mechanism to do this. I know when I mentioned this to said nonprofit, I got laughed at. Uh, Library Foundation, if you're interested in knowing how to do this, I'd be happy to explain it to you. But the city should, and the finance people, work with everybody who needs money. I mean, the first move of all governments is let's tax people. And we know what the response is. There are plenty of people who are charitably inclined, uh, especially in a town like this, and we should leverage those resources. The library is a good thing. I know my daughter went there. My daughter's becoming a physicist now. She spends a lot of hours at that library. All right? I'd like to see that library remain alive, but taxpayers don't vote for increasing taxes. But people have money to donate, there's vehicles to do it. So if you need help with that, I'm certainly available. And thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to comment? Anyone online?
There are no members of the public.
Okay. Well, the one thing, uh, Rosemary? Come on up to the, this is the treasurer of the foundation.
I'm the treasurer of the foundation. I would just like to say that I'm glad we were able to attend this meeting, and we would have appreciated maybe having more input in prior meetings that just involved the county and the city. So since we are going to be asked and help, help pay for some of these changes, I'd just like you to keep us in mind, and we can let you know what we can afford. And I'm not sure that we're fundraisers. I mean, other than our book sales, I keep seeing fundraising, fundraising written after our name. And as you know, we are, uh, just a board which has helped run this library for thirty years, thanks to these two here especially. So, um, we're certainly willing to provide information and the funds that we have, uh, if we can be included in some of the conversations ahead of time, so.
Thank you, Rosemary. And of course, that's why- Thank you, Rosemary, and of course, that's why we're here today, right? To start the conversation. And the very last comment I will make is that when we did our community survey in December and January, the ratings on like, what's your favorite building in the city of Clayton? The library overwhelmingly is the gem, right? It is well revered by everyone in this town, and thank you to the foundation who made this happen almost 30 years ago for our community. It has meant a lot to the people that have grown up here, children, and the people who continue to visit. So thank you. And anything else to add?
No, I mean, I would echo the same things, and, you know, I look at the list here, and I think that a lot of these are very doable. So I think it's just a question of giving the right direction to staff, and then having the team work together with the foundation and the county to make sure that we get the sequencing right. But yeah, I mean, I just think a lot of these things are doable, and they're probably, it's past time, so.
Well, thank you, and then we are going to close item number three. Thank you, Allison, Geneva, Jeff, for being here from the county. Thank you to the foundation. You're welcome to stay, but don't feel obligated.
Adam has one more.
Oh, Adam.
Mayor Trupiano, maybe just to kind of formalize this a little bit, give direction to staff to form a working group with the county and with the foundation and the city, have them, and has us come back next month in September to give you an update, and I think it's something that we should keep this group. And I appreciated the comments from the foundation on not necessarily being the fundraisers, but we got to look to create a community fundraising committee, which may include people from the foundation on that committee. So this is a community effort, and as you pointed out, was very, very much cherished in your survey. But give us direction to come back, and probably with a tentative date to provide an update to the full council, probably in early November, unless directed to come back sooner. But the full council will also want and expect an update soon.
Yeah, I do think that's a good idea, and that's kind of what I was saying, but I didn't say in the right way. So yes, please, if you could work with both the county and the foundation to start that work so that we can continue. I think November timeframe is a good time to come back. When I look, and thank you, the presentation was great, so as you were describing each of the items, I was taking notes on each one, and I kind of have like, ooh, I like that one, and maybe that one, I like that one a little less, but they're all good. And then kind of like a running tally of like what it would be, so, because it always helps, for me at least, and I don't know for anyone else, but it always helps me to have a target. And like, if this is what we're targeting, then, you know, that's, then we have the plan of how we get from here to there. So if you could continue that work with staff, then that would be great, if you concur.
And then Adam, Larry, and Stephanie, and Regina, do you want me to connect you with the foundation executive committee after this? Okay, I'll do that, and that way we can start getting those meetings going. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, now we are going to move to, I know I have it up on my screen finally, yeah, we are going to move to item number four, which is third floor security proposal. And I believe Regina and Larry are going to talk about this. Adam, are you going to kick us off, Adam?
We can just jump right to Larry then.
Good afternoon, committee members. This is another follow-up item related to a separate facility, the city hall. We're looking at potential modifications to the third floor, which is currently a very open floor plan. The intention is to provide some security improvements to that floor to make sure there is certain physical barriers from the public going into either offices, past the front counter, or into the break rooms. So this has been brought up by some staff members, probably within the last year, it's been discussed. The interim city manager requested that I take a look at the current situation. I'm not an architect, so engaged a potential architect to look at the existing space, prepare a scope of work, and a very rough preliminary estimate. Granted, they don't know exactly what the staff would want, the aesthetics, all those, so kind of gave a range of the potential costs. So right now, the bottom line range we anticipate is between 140 to $222,000. Obviously, that's a wide range. That does include the engineering services and the architectural services. We do think it's meant to be a collaborative process, working with the staff, working with the community on the aesthetics, because that's probably the main element beyond physically putting the barriers, is how does it look, and how does it change the feel of that room? The intention is to minimize that as much as possible, so when we looked at the initial scope, on the very low end, we were looking at kind of maybe smaller barriers, the very basics in terms of what would be improved. But there are sort of many categories, which are included in the staff report, that kind of give you the, you know, overall scope. You know, it's not just the walls, you do have to address, you know, sprinklers, alarms, security functions, electrical. So these do add up in terms of costs, but also in terms of how it will affect the aesthetics. So I think the intention today is to have the Budget and Audit Committee look at this sort of overall number. We haven't started any procurement of the architectural services, but given this overall budget, is that something the city would like to pursue? And if so, then I can bring on this architect that would do the work. And then at some point, we would do probably a bid process, it would probably be an informal bid, given the range of cost that's being proposed right now. So the overall architectural costs in design services around $44,000 on the high end, or $32,000 on the low end. So happy to take questions and elaborate as much as I can. Thank you.
Larry, if I can just piggyback on it, I love engineers, they go right to the number, and they go right to the specifics. Want to give a little bit of, a little bit more color here. First off, the aesthetics of the building is really important, and that includes the interior. And just similar to the conversation we had about the library refresh, city hall needs a refresh as well, including carpet and paint, and just cleanliness, like it, I don't know the last time it's been really scrubbed down. So I think we got to, I think we need to have a plan on how to make the facility safe for those that work there, those that visit there, but we also need to look at the facility itself and refresh carpet, furniture, and come back with a budget to do that as well. So as this security part of the project moves forward, as Larry and I started the conversation, we wanted to keep that open feel of city hall. When you come up to the third floor, it's open, it's beautiful, and you can see. And so not just to put barriers like you saw on the second floor, where the police department is basically all boxed in with one window with a reception at that window, and that's your invitation to know what's going on with police. Upstairs, though, we have a lot of activity, but we also have folks in and out. So right now, people can come upstairs and wander into people's offices and get into people's drawers. There's no security just to keep people from wandering around into offices when they're not occupied by staff. As you know, you don't have a lot of staff, so even there, when people are at meetings, you can have a vacant upstairs, and people can wander around and get into mischief. What triggered this for me was that we had a health, a mental health event down in the lobby of the police department, where someone was really having a really difficult time. And we were upstairs vulnerable to if that person decided to come upstairs and create harm and do harm to someone, there was nothing that was going to stop that person, zero, other than hopefully a police officer coming and chasing that person down. We live in a time now where people are doing bad things in the most random of places, concerts, churches, malls, schools, the list goes on and on. And so we do have a responsibility to our staff and to those that are doing business with our staff to make sure that we don't put them in harm's way. So we're trying to do the minimal improvements, but also keep the beauty of that building open on the third floor, and that's why the design that Larry's bringing forward has that. In today's world, we also need conveniences so that we can use swipe cards and pass cards to get in and out. What those cards also do is it tells you who's coming in and out. It registers who that card belongs to, so if something bad were to happen, we at least knew how someone accessed the building. If someone lost their card, we can deactivate it, replace it, and not have to worry about keys wandering around there and have things rekeyed. So there is a lot that goes into this, but I'm also here to tell you, after thinking about this a little bit further, we have more than just the security needs, we'll also need to do refresh. That's something that Stephanie, working with Larry and Jim and Regina at mid-year, will come back with a budget to look at the full refresh, and as we come to a decision on the security, we'll build that into, you know, into a schedule that makes sense to do carpet and paint at the third floor, if not throughout the entire building, and maybe we'll phase that in as well. But I just wanted to add a little bit of color to it, and just, it's 140,000 to 240,000, and there's a lot more to it than that. But I think that we're here in front of you, asking for your comments, your direction. This obviously has to come to councils, so it can't, you all can't say, Larry, go for it and go get it done, but we want to hear your feedback, and we can incorporate that into any future staff report. And again, we would bring this update to the council probably no sooner than the 17th of September, more likely that October 2 council meeting.
Or is, how do I say this? Are we wedded to the idea of a similar layout that exists currently on the third floor? Is it on the table to say like, why don't we make the third floor more like the second
Everything's on the table. We just feel from the feedback, just in the short time I've been here, the community really likes the openness of it, because you really get a sense of the historical value of the building with the, you know, with the doors, the sliding doors that, you know, that opened on both ends of the third floor. A lot of the character, obviously, the open beams, people being able to see the open beams, but anything's on the table, it just costs money to do things.
Because I feel like, you know, I haven't seen designs, you haven't done designs, so, but I'm kind of like getting a feel for what you're describing, and the wall structure that does provide the security that you're talking about for the back offices, but not the side offices, I mean, it kind of seems like a half measure. And it would also intercede with the type of visual aesthetic that you're talking about already, but if you have, but you know how like, because the stairs are, what do we call it? They switch directions, there's a name for that, I don't know what it's called. But on the second floor, it opens up to one side, and on the third floor, it opens up to the opposite. So I mean, you could literally take the second floor design, rotate it 180 degrees, and have it on the third floor, and then you'd have a really big open space still, but it would just be behind the walls, and the public wouldn't enjoy it, just the staff would. I mean, I don't know, I was just, as a thought, I know it's more expensive, but I don't know. I just, I need to see more, because I don't think there's enough to say like, I mean, I guess there's a number of questions. One is like, is this worth that? Is this the right time to do that? Is, like, what is the, you know, it's difficult to measure the benefit because you're working towards preventing a rare event, so there's that. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
And I just have a couple of things, some of which I've already spoken to Adam about. And because it is a historic building, and I don't know if we're constrained by making certain modifications, but is it unreasonable, and I'm all about the safety of the staff on the third floor. It is a beautiful open space, but there could be some vulnerabilities for sure. One of the ideas that I ran by Adam is, could we just lock the front door of city hall and have a camera on there, which I think we do already, and people have to be buzzed in by dispatch before entering the building? And maybe, I don't know if they have to have an appointment or not, I don't want to get into too many specifics here, but is there a way to kind of have to buzz people in? And the second thing I was thinking about is, could you have some kind of barrier at the second floor before you are able to access the third floor? And again, they have to, they can walk upstairs to the police department, they have to check in with dispatch, and before they're allowed to come to the third floor, they have to check in and have to be cleared. I don't know how many people we have coming to city hall Monday to Thursday when we're open. I remember asking our former city manager this when this came up about a year ago, and he said about 20 people a week. I don't know if that's accurate or still relevant, but are there other solutions we can come up with? And that's separate than carpeting, yes, paint, yes, new furniture, yes. We need all that, those are things that we certainly need on the third floor, but security-wise, is there something else we can do before you even get to the third floor?
Yeah, I would concur. Those are also, those are also things that I would think about as well before we, you know, as part of the available options before we actually execute, like to explore like those as well, because I think those are, they have potential.
What do you think?
I think in general, you have to decide where your access, public access is going to begin and end, right? And even if you let, you know, look, I'm not a staff member in the office, so this is my own sort of outside perspective, but buzzing people in is, you then have to decide who can come in and out. So you're going to run into an issue at some point of, why didn't you let me in? And so you do have to worry about, okay, why is that, and if there's certain policy that's set up. I don't believe I've ever encountered a city agency where the front public desk is behind the security where you have to be buzzed in. It probably does occur somewhere, but it's very rare, usually at least to the front desk, similar to maybe what the police department is today is common, you see that in probably most of the cities around here. I think the relative nature of where you want that access is absolutely going to make a difference in the cost of, I mean, this intention was the architect modifying the space on the third floor to allow counter-access that's similar to what it is today, but with maybe a little bit more secure barrier, and the elevator access in. So those are both public spaces. Yeah, so the elevator has to be still open to the public, and so how you sort of create the, the initial envisioning was taking sort of where you come up the landing, and that becomes the public space where someone is entering, but they cannot get beyond, passed into the front counter, or into the break room, or any of the glass-doorred offices currently, or even the areas in the corners for the currently, or even the areas in the corners for the, the cubicle more spaces. So, where you put that entry point is going to be very different. If you, I would say you don't need an architect, obviously, for, if you're going to just lock people at the front door, you know, at the very first floor and not let them in, or you put maybe that's where the, the front counter person is, is down on the front, first floor, you know, you'd have to modify that space. But I think where you want to have that sort of point of security is going to tremendously affect how you want this proposal to be prepared. So, I think it's important that the city decide like, okay, where, where is the interface point? Because if you want it to still be open like the third floor, I do agree, it's going to be very different than, and it's probably more costly than just putting obviously a, a camera and a lock on the first floor. So, that's my, that's why I bring this forward is like, we would have renderings, that's part of the scope, to see what you want, but if that isn't part of the envisioning of what you want for the third floor, then it's not.
Well, and then I, going back to what Councilmember Wong said earlier, and I guess I'm just trying to visualize this, so you'd come up to the third floor, but access to the Community Development Director's Office, City Manager, Assistant City Manager would still be.
It's still right there, no difference.
There would be behind the wall.
So, but it's creating a second wall, right?
You would create a, if, think of where the elevator, you come up, the elevator's on the right, you would have a wall from the corner of the cable railing to the, to the wall next to the elevator. So, that way, there's a door that the folks by Regina's office, folks could go in and out.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
And then you would put another door on the left side that would separate the break room from, so then these walls can connect into sort of the front counter.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I'm not trying to knock the idea, so don't take it like as a discouragement.
Yeah.
But if the goal is to maintain some openness, the walls that you're talking about kind of go counter to that.
I agree.
I mean, like, okay, so two things that I'm thinking about, like that, when you say that where the access point is, that is, I think that's like a key consideration, right? Like, the access point could be on the first floor. You don't need a locked thing, but you could have a counter on the first floor. We have a storage room, we have a conference room, and we have the area on the stairs. I mean, that's, not saying it's a good idea, but that's there. And then on the second floor, you already have all the security. I mean, you could theoretically have the counter on the second floor for your main access and then shift the current police operations in that area to the now secure third floor. And that is a lot less costly as well, I would think, because then you're just blocking at the stairwell. I mean, I just think there's, the constraint of keeping the third floor largely unchanged necessitates certain actions I don't think that you would do if you were to Greenfield, how you would set up City Hall. So, that's how I'm thinking about it.
Why don't you let us come, I, I think you need some visuals here, and, and it's not just where someone interacts with the front counter, it's also you have limited staff. So, if you got staff on the first floor, how are they working with people on the third floor, right? So, it really is looking at how the team works together, not just the security. Security is one piece, and, and what I don't want to get lost in the discussion, it's also the privacy, people not walking in to the, you know, so maybe they're not here to do any harm, but they come wandering up and they're like, oh, Adam's not in, let's just go into Adam's office and maybe I'll make a few phone calls, you know, or maybe I'll just check and see what, you know, in his filing cabinet, right? You know, so, you know, we, we just don't want people being able to come in and out of our offices without some, some type of barrier to prevent that. The, the, what was nice about the display from the library refresh was that when they talked about the quiet zone or the teen zone with the glass, that's exactly what we're talking. So, you still have the openness of the space, it's just separated by glass, not separated by solid partitions that you can't see through. So, the light doesn't get affected, and again, you get the openness of it, but you still get the security and a barrier to keep people from wandering around the place. But if you're comfortable under the city manager's authority, under $30,000, to spend a little bit of money to get some potential, I think it would have been helpful today to kind of show you some very limited sketches of this, and then with your feedback, we can talk about the pros and cons of a first floor, second floor. I'll tell you from being in government for 37 years now, that we're about being open and transparent, not come through here and then are you going to put, you know, Clayton's a very safe community, but now are you going to have people walk through metal detectors? Because the person comes and says, I'm here just to deliver some plans to the Community Development Director, but in fact, he's here to take care of this Community Development Director because they denied his project, you know, and, and is pissed off about that and going to come punch him in the face? You know, I mean, that's what happens today. People get pissed off when things happen. So, you, you need to make sure that there is some barrier that keeps people from coming in and out, and it may be a rarity and hopefully it never happens, right? But that doesn't give your staff and the public assurances that nothing's going to happen. So, I think the discussion is, and the feedback is really good. We know we need to do something. What we need to do is, I don't think we're anywhere close to reaching agreement on what, what we need, so why don't we come back with some preliminary information? Larry, working with the architect, not spending a lot of money right now just to get some initial ideas in front of you, and then take back some of the feedback, and we come back with the pros of if we were to do it on the second floor and what would that take? Or the pros on doing it on the first floor and what would that take? And then the cons of doing, you know, on, on both of those.
Can I ask, does the elevator access the second floor to the public right now? Like, it's in the hallway, right? I don't, I never stop at the second floor, so I always go straight to the third. It's, it's there, okay. So, I mean, that's an option too.
Yeah, and I had just two other follow-up questions, Larry. One is, I don't know what we've spent already on this project, and if then we come back with a first floor, second floor, third floor version, you know, how much we might be looking at. So, if you can speak to that. And also, we did get an email from a constituent who I guess has done some work in City Hall, Mr. Miller, and I just want to address his concerns. I forwarded that to all of you about the historic nature of the building and that we have to be careful about making modifications. So, can you speak to those two things as well?
Yes. So, in terms of what's been spent to date, it's been very minimal. It's been mostly my time, and I've been trying to keep it very limited. The architect has only prepared a scope of work, hasn't been authorized to do any work. It was, we're going to follow up after this meeting. I would generally say the cost of looking at different options wasn't something that they originally proposed. So, if we're going to look at multiple locations, granted, this, you know, it might be simpler on different floors. I would estimate like the, the sort of renderings and presentation coming to the council in that time is probably between $5,000 and $10,000 in that range. And that's just to get to the rendering. The overall cost was $32,000 to $42,000 for, that was, you know, bid documents. So, it could be lower, you know, like, we don't know how often you're going to go back and forth, or how many options you want to look at. You want to look at first, second, and the third floor, you know? We only looked at the third floor. In terms of the, I, I'm aware that, you know, it, it's an old distillery winery facility, has a lot of value to the community. I think the intention is obviously to minimize it, not only from the cost, but from preserving the, the nature of the, the building. We have not done a lot of research into the historical designations and what can and can't be done. So, that would be something that you would add to the scope of either the architect, who may be more familiar with it, or city staff on our side to, to research it. Generally speaking, the inside has already been modified clearly for the office, so I, I think the threshold is different than, say, the outside nature of the, the building. So, I, I do think modifications can be made. It's just a matter of obviously the, the magnitude. And if we want to work with the community, if just regardless of the historical nature of it, if there is, you know, input as to how you want it to look aesthetically, and, you know, the, the public may still want to, I want to be up on the third floor to be able to see the stuff, then obviously you get that input. So, like I said, kind of rounding it back up, I think it's probably a $5,000 to $10,000 expenditure to, to come up with visuals, if, if that's what was requested.
Okay. And then last thing is, I do want to make sure we're talking about the aesthetics and the cosmetic improvements. So, could we, when we come back, have costs for paint and carpeting and furniture as part of that, right?
Yeah, I would, the things that staff is interested in and maybe stack rank them.
There we go.
This for the entire facility?
Well, for the, the interior furnitures and fixtures that the staff needs that are like, you know, needs, in need of replacement and maintenance, that type of thing that I think that they're aware of.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. I don't think I have any other questions.
I do not. Public comment?
Public comment? Is there anybody who would like to? Ms. Shulman?
Maria Shulman. As far as the third floor with security and keeping it open, just an idea that you can float out there, you can make it sort of like they do in banks with clear walls, and when you come up the steps, you can make the wall around the steps, and at the end of the counter there, you could put a wall with a door, and on the other side, a door. That way, you're open, it's light, people can still see, but you are secure, and you could do the swipe, or you could do a code. You don't need a key. So, it would be still open, still aesthetically pleasing, and you could still see people. So, people still feels that they have a connection. Just my two cents.
Thank you.
I, I think that is the, that is the recommendation they presented. Mr. Gavidia?
I never talk this much. So, I know last year, there was someone here, and the prior city manager kind of made a big stink out of it, but it was someone who basically goes around making videos having to do with the rights we as citizens have, kind of a First Amendment thing. Councilmember Wong, I know you and I are diehard believers in the First Amendment. Man comes in and expects to be treated properly by staff. I don't think our staff would ever mistreat someone, but I watched one video where, you know, there's no rule when I come in for a Public Records Act that says, I have to give you my name or anything. I just tell you what I want, I'll be back in 10 days. I don't have to fill out a card when I come up and speak here, that's the law. And some public employees get belligerent when citizens come in. So, I know last year, I think what he wanted, he overreacted. And I know some of us who were aware of what happened in the community last year did not want to see that. It was a huge expense he was proposing, and we don't want to see City Hall locked up. I grew up across the bay. You walk into San Francisco, you got to go through a metal detector. You're right, Adam, that's, but that's San Francisco. You know what goes on over there. We had one, I guess, mental issue here. We shouldn't exaggerate, we've got great police, they do react quickly. I do want to see that all our staff are safe. But before we decide to, let's do any kind of closing up about City Hall, you know, we're a little town, kind of like Mayberry, I like being able to walk in, and no, I'm not going to wander into your office, Adam, without, hey, can I talk to him first or yours, Regina? Maybe yours, Stephanie, I will, because I know I'm always welcome there. But, you know, we don't want to become San Francisco. We don't want to be all locked up behind bulletproof glass, that, that's just not Clayton. So, give this a lot of thought, and yeah, it's a lot of money before we spend it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Is there anybody else? Anyone online?
No members of the public are joining us online.
Okay, thank you. And so, the recommendation is you'll come back with some additional options to the Budget and Audit Committee meeting, and then we'll go to council. Thank you, city staff. We'll close item number four, and item number five is purchase of a lawnmower. Our new Assistant City Manager, Regina Rubier, please take it away.
So, week one on the job, the lawnmowers die. We have, we currently have two, we currently, poor Jim, he had a week last week. We currently have two lawnmowers. One is approximately 31 years old. It was purchased in 1993, and despite our willingness to repair and replace the parts on that mower, it's reached its end of its useful life, we just can't find the replacement parts any longer. So, we are asking that mower to be put into our surplus, and shortly after that lawnmower died, our 2013 lawnmower, which is now 11 years old, that we purchased back then for about $23,000, its hydraulic brake line also broke. And so, both of our lawnmowers are now not functioning. However, we are getting that one repaired. So, we are asking for the council to approve a purchase for a X-Mark 144-inch Laser D diesel lawnmower, which reaches ground speeds of up to 12 and a half miles an hour. So, this will reduce our lawn mowing time in about half. Not only is it much faster, it's also a much wider cut that our maintenance staff is going to be able to produce. There is a plethora of why it is more efficient and safe, that with the engine technology, larger cutting deck, improved deck design, improved visibility. It goes on and on and on and on. That will all be included in your staff report if you approve for us to move forward with this item. The downside is, due to inflation, the price of said lawnmower is now $75,000. This is an unbudgeted item, so we would have to be taking this out of fund balance and do a budget adjustment along with the contract. So, that is the end of my report. Jim and I are available for questions.
Well, and spoken like a true Assistant City Manager, she gave us the cost list and all the features upfront, I appreciate that. And obviously, a mowing is the, a huge part of our maintenance team responsibilities. My only question is, because it is not budgeted, if we approve it today, how are we paying for it? And does the council need to approve this as well?
The council will need to approve this at its next council meeting next Tuesday. Staff report is about prepared, so we will be able to make that timeline.
Thank you. And otherwise, I say it's a necessity. I can't imagine how we could operate without it. So, Councilmember Wong.
Are there any alternatives that were considered?
We did consider alternatives, Jeff. We considered purchasing two smaller mowers, but just due to the efficiency of the one large mower, and now we're having two people on lawnmowers as opposed to just having the one person. So, yes, there were. And, and the price for the two mowers is about the same price as the, this one mower.
Is, is the one small mower equivalent to the one that's broken?
It's a little bit smaller, is my understanding. As far as the purchasing portion of this, we did look, we did go through the procurement process, and we're using the Omnia co-op purchasing agreement, so we didn't have to go through the, the three bidding portion.
Does the larger mower have any, any challenge in navigating spaces that the prior mower's smaller size would allow us to do, but the larger one would be unable to do?
It's, my understanding that the larger mower actually turns swifter? Is that correct, Jim?
But I mean, in terms of fitting in any places?
Oh.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, push the one that says on and off. Vice Mayor Tripiano, Councilmember Wong. This mower has a zero turn radius. This mower has a zero turn radius. Instead of a steering wheel, it has turn toggles. There will be a couple of areas that we won't be able to get to that we will be able to take care of with the smaller push mowers or with a weed eater. All in all, we're going to, we're going to cut our mowing time in half, which will allow us to get other things done that aren't getting done now, such as trimming, edging on a regular basis. You know, with our limited staff, there are just things that we don't get to. Irrigation repair, if you go to the park, there's all kinds of brown spots. And it's just difficult for us to get the mowing done. It takes us a day and a half to mow now. This is going to cut that down to a half a day or a third of the day and, and mow all the parks instead of, you know, a day and a half to mow all the parks. So if you remember back when we were talking about ARPA money, I asked for a lawnmower.
I remember.
Knowing that our older lawnmower was nearing the end of its life. Well, a couple of months ago, it broke down. I researched, had our mechanic look for parts. I called our distributor, Turf Star. And we had already bought this part a year ago, and it was the last one on the shelf. And they're not making any more. So it broke again, and consequently, we have one lawnmower that was repaired today, but that's it. So in order to get the job done, if that 13-year-old lawnmower breaks down again and we have nothing to mow the, the big part for, you know, Little League and all the people that use that part on a daily basis. So my personal opinion, it's a necessity that we, that we absolutely have to have. Now granted, we don't have to buy a 12, 12-foot lawnmower. But if you want to save time, if you want to get more done with the same amount of people, this is the way to go.
All right. Will you commit to coming back after we have acquired this lawnmower and you've become familiar with it to let us know how long it actually takes?
Oh, no. Of course I will.
Okay. Because I, I like to, to follow up to see if we're, if we're expecting to see a certain X percent reduction. That's what the brochure will tell us. So let's see what it actually is.
Right now, right now, we have a six-foot cutting radius. We're doubling that. With a faster lawnmower, it's more economical.
No, I, I get it. And I agree with you. No disagreement. I just, in, when you, in practical terms, when you operationalize it, it may not be a pure 50%, so I'm curious to see what it actually is.
Right. Well, I got to say, since our lawnmower was broken down last week and we were looking at this lawnmower, I talked to salesperson into doing a demo. Okay, so all the guys were up at the park, and it happened to be Thursday, our mow day. And, you know, knowing Little League's coming on the weekend and the lawns weren't mowed, I had all the infield's around the infield's mowed, which was very nice. And I personally rode the machine, and I'm like, man, this thing's a Cadillac compared to what we're riding. And the other thing too is that we're also purchasing a sun shade for the top of it. Right now, we don't have that on our lawnmower. And, and I know it seems trivial, but, I mean, when you talk about melanoma and, and skin cancer and stuff like that, I mean, we're going to be providing a little extra shade for our people. So that's, that's another positive aspect to it.
Do we, do we bring this with the trailer?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The wing's folded up, and it's the same width as, as the mower we have now.
Is there like an extended warranty we can get?
You know, that, that part I haven't discussed with the salesperson yet, but I will definitely do that.
Worth, worth exploring.
I thought you were going to ask for a ride on the lawnmower, which I wouldn't mind taking a test drive with the mower when we get it. But I say yes.
Yeah, me too. I'll look at it from a great distance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you both.
Okay. And is there any public comment on this item? Anyone?
All right.
And anyone online?
There's no member.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then we'll close item number five and move on to item number six. Review preliminary draft of the strategic plan objectives and implementation plan. Our Assistant City Manager, Regina Rubier.
Let me, let me kick this off. And as I have shared, as I've shared with the council members in my one-on-one meeting, you know, this is still a work in progress. And so we're really, we have some questions for the two of you as we're kind of trying to understand what the council did back in February when you reduced your nine goals down to five. And then you broke into subcommittees of council members and came back with objectives related to those five goals. But you didn't vote on them, you didn't reach consensus on them, you just kind of shared the information. And then the next steps kind of got lost in the, in the transition here of city managers. So Regina and I have picked up the mantle and what Regina's going to kind of go through here. Just confirm that we have the, the correct five goals. Because even then, it's, it's a little difficult to understand if it was nine, seven, or five? Or, or did some of those get blended? And then when we look at them, some of them are very similar in terms of the type of goals where you're looking at recreation, you know, or you're looking at infrastructure. You know, and, and so, you know, there's some things there that we'll probably have some questions of. What we don't want to do today and what we don't want to do when we bring this to council is say, this is, this is your five goals and these are your objectives. And here's what we're going to do over the next two to three years. We're not trying to do that at all. And, and we, and we couldn't do that even if we were superheroes and had the power to do so. But we want to just say between now and end of January, of the five goals, based on our interpretation of what was discussed in, as objectives, is what one or two things per goal, maybe one or two things per goal, can we start moving forward between now and the end of January? And a good example of that is with accessibility and infrastructure that was related to your sidewalks and your streets. And so one of the things that Larry and Jim and I are talking about is a pilot program to move forward with a relationship with property owners in the city to repair some of the sidewalks that are damaged and are accessibility issues and are liability for trip and fall. That ties to your goal for infrastructure and accessibility. It ties to your objectives to kind of move it forward. But it's actually getting stuff done too. So what I don't like seeing personally, this is my opinion, not anyone sitting at this table or Larry's, is I don't like spending a lot of money studying things versus doing things. And our own naked eyes, and you have two experts there with Jim and Larry, can tell you that's a trip and fall hazard, or that's an accessibility issue. Or you have a property owner that would like to work with us to improve that. So why don't we start there first and evaluate the success of that and then decide if we want to broaden that or not going into the next year. So between now and January, the three of us think we can probably make some headway on that. And we're looking for you to agree that that fits under the objective and that fits underneath the goal. If we can, some of them are a little bit more complicated, like economic development. Probably not something that Regina and the new city manager, assuming that you approve the new city manager's contract on next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, will be able to make much headway on that. But with Regina and the new city manager working together in October, maybe they come back to you in October or early November and continue to keep this document kind of as a living document where we continue to build on the implementation measures between now and, and, in January. The idea here is that when you get to January, February, and you're kicking off your budget process, which will include a variety of things, including renewing your council's priorities. You may, you will have at least one new council member on your council come the November election, because we all have probably learned that Councilmember Clovan has chosen not to run for reelection. So there's one seat at a minimum that could change and will change. And so your council will come back together with its new management team and look at the priorities again, the council's priorities, define the objectives a little bit more in detail, reach consensus amongst the council and the staff on what those objectives are. And then during the budget process, which will also include a CIP plan, we'll tie in your priorities, your CI plan and your budget to actually move these things forward and then report every six months to the council on the progress of, of, of those priorities, objectives and implementation measures. So this is just to get us moving so that when we show up in January to start this conversation, we have something to point to and show the effects and the benefits of doing this so that we can actually expand upon it. So that's the intent of today, is to have Regina kind of just go back through the five goals, go through the objectives that we were able to identify from the council meeting in February, and then identify a handful of implementation measures that we'd like to bring to the council on the 20th to get the five of your, five members' support to move forward on, on these implementation measures. We don't want to bite off more than we can chew because we really are in transition with the next city manager coming, you know, to the city and, and with Regina assuming her position. And then obviously Larry has now taken on some additional responsibilities, working hand in hand with Jim. So I think some of the things, especially in the infrastructure area, that will take a little bit more time to really look at, look at that. And then economic development is definitely a long-term, you know, plan. There's some things you may be able to implement in the next year. But to try to rush and do something in September and October, November in an election year makes, you know, pretty much makes not a whole lot of sense. But let me turn it over to Regina to walk through this. Get your initial feedback again. We're not looking if we reach consensus on anything. We just want to make sure we're going the right path on the information we've collected and, and the implementation measures that we're recommending.
And, and the only thing I just want to ask or add is that it was about aligning the goals to the budget as well, right? And whether that's the next six months, one year, two year, maybe navigating to a two-year budgeting process. Okay. Because we have to, we can't just come up with the goals. We have to make sure we can pay for the things. Okay. Thanks, Regina. Go ahead.
All right. So I spent a lot of time studying your February 20th, 2024 council meeting. I believe it was the 20th. I've been able to determine that the five goals that the council picked were public safety, infrastructure and accessibility, community parks and rec division, economic development, a balanced budget, and the landscape maintenance district. Those were the goals that we wanted to focus on. Of those goals, goal one, public safety, infrastructure and accessibility, we looked at different strategies to develop a citywide improved pedestrian accessibility plan that includes general pedestrian and roadway safely, safety and ADA improvements. Now, the ones that you see highlighted in yellow, you see that there's four of them. There's a, a 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F. The ones that are highlighted in yellow, 1B, 1E and 1F, those are the strategies that I believe that we can make some headway on between now and the end of the calendar year. So 1B is to create a comprehensive maintenance and repair strategy with mapping and timeline that identifies where the work and repairs need to be done and the cost for implementing or completion. So myself, Jim and Larry will work on getting some plan in place to make sure that we can get this mapping taken care of. 1C, conduct an assessment study of the current irrigation system at our five largest parks. That's something that I believe that Jim and Larry have the time that they can take that on and report back to council in the next quarter. 1D, fast, add a fast electric charging station. It's going to take a little bit longer. So we're not going to focus on that this first quarter of trying to implement, implement this. 1E is to replace the three oldest maintenance trucks and replace them with three new Ford F-150 Lightning trucks for the maintenance team. Now, while we can purchase them, I have past experience on purchasing electronic, electric vehicles without having proper charging stations. So while we can purchase them in this next quarter, I would advise not to until we can actually charge them so that we can have, we can use them instead of having to take them down to the local charging station and pay for the charging that way. 1F, post online quarterly maintenance schedules with high-level maintenance objectives listed for the quarter. And every quarter, there would be different objectives. There are obviously different objectives for the fall. You're going to get winter rise and get ready for the winter. In the spring, you're going to start getting ready for things. In the summer, you're going to try to keep things alive as the heat burns everything up. So we can work on that. Goal two is community parks and recreation. There was two different strategies that the council wanted to look at for this one. Determine feasibility of expanding usability of the Clayton Community Park by adding lighting, improving fields and related facilities. That's more of a long-term plan that we will need to work on. But in the next quarter, we can explore options and locations for youth and or senior recreation.
Sure.
I think what the council didn't discuss in February, what the Special Events Committee has been discussing, I think probably would fit in the recreation part of this discussion, is kind of reviewing your special events. And I know that working with Stephanie and the chief and the community development director, we need to really look at our special events process, the application. We need to look at the categories of events from those events that are sponsored by the city, those events that are cosponsored by the city, and those events that are put on by outside entities. And what's the process and the fees and, and all the other requirements for each one of those buckets. In addition to that, I think we need to look at the staffing level support, both the permanent staffing that we have to support it and looking at the, the roles of, of the various administrative positions that the city has that are currently vacant, looking at, at how we can use them to support special events in the office. And then look at seasonal staff that can also actually help those, the volunteers, help those, the, the producers, you know, help those out there the day of the event. Because there's always something that happens, including buying pizza or turning off this, on off, off and on the splash pad or other things like that. So I think we need to have a conversation working through the Special Events Committee on, on really what the process is, what, what events fall into what category, and then how are we going to support these as we go into next spring and summer, special event season. So you have a little bit of time for the committee to have this, this conversation and then at mid-year budget, potentially make some, make some adjustments if necessary as we move forward. But the urgency on the city staff side on this is to develop a special events policy. Now, this shouldn't be difficult because almost every city around has a special events policy. It's online, it's an application, tells you everything that you need to do. And it also tells you how long you have to do it in front. So here in Clayton, we seem to do things the week of the event, especially for the outside folks that are trying to get the city's approval versus doing that a minimum 45 to 60 days in advance. So all of the checkboxes are checked and that all of the actions are, are reviewed. So I think in this goal of, of recreation, I think we'll add a, a bullet when we bring this to council that talks about the special events, review of the special events process.
Okay. Onto goal three, economic development. We want to create a vibrant downtown business atmosphere that is compatible with the size and needs of our community. We want to create business and tax revenue beyond just Clayton residents. There is a strategy to have an economic development plan to evaluate and support existing and create new businesses. This is something that's definitely going to have to be a longer-term goal. But something we can implement pretty quickly is institute a conscientious city business spotlight through the city social media page. That's something that we could have some, some, one of our city staff employees do maybe once a week or once a month or whatever we, we have, whatever council determines is appropriate. Goal four, balanced budget. Create a balanced budget for this year and in future years. That's very, we've done that, we'll continue to do that. That's not going to be an issue as far as creating the budget. But making sure that for future years, that we want to create a comprehensive, long-term fiscal plan for forecasting. That, I think, is something that we really need to roll up our sleeves and get. and get busy working on here. And then, we want to receive, council should be receiving quarterly budget updates that I'm already starting calendaring in, so we'll get there. And Goal Five is the Landscape Maintenance District. We want to prioritize funding for the LMD, and that's something that we can start looking at here very quickly in the next quarter as we move forward for the mid-year budget review and after the first of the year, as we start to look for next year's budget. And then, we will create a comprehensive maintenance and repair strategy with mapping and the timeline that identifies where the work and repairs need to be done and the costs for completion. And that is what I took out of your meeting in February. I'm here to receive guidance from you and feedback.
Oh, go ahead.
I like all of those things. I think they're good. Like, I think that's a good approach. I do think exploring the light standards at the park, I kind of like that idea. And I think we can probably make some movement on a plan for a plan, not a real plan. I think that there's potential there because it's going to be third-party work anyways, so. I know, I think Larry already did some preliminary work, but that'd be my only comment.
Thank you, Jeff. And my only comment, thank you, Regina. This was an Adam. Excellent. Just Goal Number One, and I did serve on that short ad hoc committee with Councilmember Tillman. I think we were more in, it got a little bit more into maintenance and vehicle replacement, and that, we were thinking more sidewalks, roadways, capital improvement projects, ADA improvements. And I know we've talked about EV charging, maybe in Climatex Phase Two, if we have one. And then, if we're able to add EV charging, then we would, of course, buy EV vehicles as we replace them. But I think that was more kind of our focus, more get, you know, repair the sidewalks, repair the roadways, look at our capital improvement projects. And that in terms of public safety, not like police public safety. Because we've had a lot of folks talk to us about, you know, the need for ADA improvements throughout the city. Otherwise, I think it's out of traffic. And economic development, we know it's long-term, but we do have vacancies in the downtown and at Clayton Station Shopping Center. And we want to, that's a source of sales tax revenue for us, so we want to keep our eye on that. And thank you for all the work you've done on the budget. We would appreciate quarterly updates and mid-year updates and...
Any updates, actually.
Any updates would be welcome. So, thank you. This was great. Appreciate it.
No, I think that's it.
Any comment from the public on this item? Anybody online?
There's no one online.
No one? Okay. Thank you. And so, what are you looking for from us to...
So, this is still a work in progress. And even between the meeting earlier today and now, Regina has updated. I would tell you that it's still too ambitious. And it's not that the items that you all just mentioned, they are important. They're all important, right? But what can we do, especially in this transition right now, between now and January, to make progress? And so, that's why, you know, I think we'll go back and look at this, and I'm going to pare it down a little bit less than what Regina had shared today.
Yeah, you have to tell us what's reasonable based on your assessment of the time.
Right. It's better for us to come back and add items as we get momentum versus tell you that we can't get to items, right?
Yeah.
So, I think we want to start with just, here's what their discussions have been happening, special events discussions have been happening, sidewalk repair discussions have been happening. So, those are things that I am confident that this team's going to be able to move forward with and make some progress. So, Regina and I'll just spend some time, we'll bring this again on the 20th. We'll need your help, since you've got to spend a little bit of time working with us on this, to make sure that we don't get outside of just what we're trying to do between now and January. These are your goals. We're going to refresh and review these goals in January, February, when the new council is seated and you've had some time to work with your new city manager and your new management team. And then, as you prepare your next budget, as the vice mayor shared, don't put an objective or an implementation measure that you can't pay for or you don't have a resource to actually work on. So, you know, that will be, take some discipline from the group. And also, as the vice mayor said, even if we move to a two-year budget, some of these are five, six-year plans, right? So, how do we move forward six months at a time in a two-year cycle to actually get some of these things forwarded? So, anyway, we have the feedback that we were seeking. Regina and I will pare this down and bring it forward for discussion on Tuesday, the 20th, at the council meeting.
Okay. So, you don't need any additional prioritization from us? Okay. You've got what you need. Terrific. Anything else?
No, I think that's Item Six.
That's Item Six. And Item Seven?
I am running really short on time.
Yeah.
So...
I think this is our last agenda item.
I think this is just a kind of a list so that they're still top of mind of items that are still open for later. But I don't think we're discussing these now.
We're not discussing any of these. These are just future topics that if we want to put on the forefront as we start making our priorities for our implementation action plan on our strategic plan, that maybe these could be things that we would add there or direct staff to move forward with.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And the next meeting of the Budget Nauta Committee will be September 9. Hopefully, if we're here, we will have HVAC fixed and we won't be...
Dying.
Dying. And I will adjourn this meeting at 6:19. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cavidia, thank you, Ms. Tillman, thank you. Jim?